I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order for February 15th. Roll call?
Smith, President.
Gil, President.
Krantz and I. And if you'll join us in pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have to worry, Joe? You're giving me that look like, man, she screwed up again.
No.
Oh, okay.
I did it perfectly.
All right. Gentlemen, have a chance to read the minutes?
Yes.
Did comma forget some commas?
No.
Sure?
I'm not that picky on that. I'm not that picky. I'll move the minutes of the meeting of the Select Board as of February 1st, 2023, as written.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Gil, my eye.
Smith, eye. First thing on the agenda, the Super Bowl. How stupid was that? All right, then we'll move on to Primrose Road. Although Ron has said he wanted to wait until the end, I think we should just dispatch it as soon as possible. And this is an acceptance of Primrose Road, which has been a long...
It was Wayne, Marty.
Wayne? Okay, it's Lane, which has been a long time coming. And Planning Board has already approved it, but we're sending it back to them after approval by our board, because that's what we like to do in government. So I don't think that Ron needs to speak to this, but if you guys have any questions about it?
So I was looking at a little commentary on the right, and it's just sort of giving us instructions as to the procedure, the process, how this has to play out. So I didn't see anything in there that needed changing.
So pretty much the motion is there for you folks, and once it goes back there, it's just working on the legal documents to get everything situated.
Yep.
Yeah, the only question, Bill, was on the last one where it did say the comment on the right said, what are the easements that are being conveyed to the town? I don't know if that question's been answered or not. That was...
That'll all get situated once we...
On the deed.
Yeah, once we get all the deed and legal paperwork.
Okay. We have the motion in our books. I'm not sure that we have to read the whole thing. Can we just do as written?
Sure.
And then the comma could put it in the minutes?
Just that it's going back to the Planning Board.
So I would make the motion, I would entertain a motion to move this forward as written and send it back to the Planning Board.
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Gil, my eye.
Smith, eye.
Krantz and I. You're all set, Ron?
Thank you.
Good luck. It's been a long time coming, I know.
I guess so.
Yeah. I remember those meetings. They were long. All right.
Long.
Seriously, it's got to be, what, six years?
Six.
Ten?
More than that.
It goes way better.
Few snacks.
Few snacks, yes. Minor detail.
I don't mention any names.
Okay. Please don't. All right. Next, we have a volunteer application for Jen Corliss. Jennifer can't be here tonight, and that's for the Recreation Committee appointment. So we can pass that without you gentlemen meeting her, or we can put it on our next agenda. She had a death in the family, so she's not able to be here.
Actually, that's the other one, the one from the family.
All right, Jen Corliss does not have a death in the family. Sorry, Jennifer.
Yeah, I didn't hear back on the phone when that something came up.
All right.
I don't think Tuesday or Thursday is a problem. Also, the only restrictions she said she had for meetings or for rec issues, I don't think that's an issue for the Rec Committee or the Rec Board.
Well, they're meeting right now, so that's a Wednesday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's only until four she's committed, so they meet at night. We can move forward with this and let Sherry know that we've made the appointment and let Ms. Corliss know that she needs to get sworn in.
She might actually be, if they're meeting right now, she might actually be at that meeting.
Yeah. All right.
I'll move that we appoint Jennifer Corliss to the Recreation Committee based on her application.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Gil, my eye.
Smith, eye.
Krantz and I. That must, Sherry's committee must be pretty well full now, right?
I think that was the last one they needed.
Okay. Wow. And we talked about the non-union Colas at our last meeting, and it's on our agenda again tonight. So why don't we settle this tonight so we can move forward and include it in the warrant in the budget?
Yeah, I think we're pretty much on track with municipal and all the unions for 3% cost of living increase. I think, I mean, that fire and dispatch does not finalize what's coming to us. It's going back to the union. I don't see any, I don't see any problems with any of the major items, and that's the big one, so.
All right, this is the non-union that we're talking about.
Right, and I just think going along with sort of a goal to keep that all the same for non-union and union, I think that will be in a, most of this is disaster before town meeting. I think it's what we should do. I think we should go ahead with a 3% cost of living.
I'll abstain from discussion as I may have a vested interest in the...
Yep.
Well, as I said at our last meeting, I can't imagine that we would do anything less for our municipal employees despite what comes back from the schools.
Yep.
So I would, any further discussion there? Bill, do you want to throw in?
No.
Okay.
Joe, maybe.
Joe wants to say no to everything, so.
I start by saying no. You know me by now.
You're getting that reputation, by the way, just so you know, FYI. Okay.
As John said, unless, you know, some unexpected disaster occurs before a town meeting, I...
You already kind of incorporated that into it.
It's in the omnibus that we've considered already, so it would have to be something pretty significant that we would have to go through to change that.
Yeah, good job on all that. The omnibus is in good shape. The capital five-year plan looks in very good shape, too. Probably some minor things are going to have to be done, but, so, yeah, I think it's well thought out, and I think that we should go forward with...
Especially in light of the fact, what'd they come out with, 6.5% increase?
6.4, which is still way too high. You can only hope that by year-end it starts dropping. Never seen it like that in a long time, but it will drop, and 3% is, I think, more than reasonable. I can see why people would want more, but you can't tag it to inflation every year anyway, because there are some years that it goes down. I don't know if it'll ever go down, negative territory, but I think 3% is reasonable. And I think all the people I've talked to, both on FedCon, the unions, down the municipal people, I think they, I think they would agree. Everybody wants more, of course, but I mean, I think they know it's reasonable and given the situation we're in, you know, craft of...
We'll just tell them that Joe won't let us take anymore. So the motion's been made?
Motion's made.
All the, I second that, and all those in favor?
Gil, my eye.
Krantz and I. All right. And also at our last meeting, we had our town clerk, it's forwarded us the recommendations for voting, and I believe that everybody got the note from Kathy Pharo. I had asked her to explain to us why we weren't opening up earlier on voting day. So she wrote this all up for us and gives us a cost evaluation. And keep in mind that this is the local elections, and so far we have not many people running, so our numbers will be even less than usual unless we get some hot and heavy competition, which at this point, I will say, we have seats available pretty much on every board, elected board.
Yeah. You're not going to reason just to five people.
Yeah, we need, definitely, there's nobody so far running on the Planning Board. So anybody want to take out papers? You'll have until...
End of March?
End of March.
Maybe mid-March.
Yeah. So, back to the voting. She did meet with her registrars, and they all did agree that the shorter hours were, made more sense, and you could do a seven to two or a 12 to seven. But you can't open at seven, stop, and then reopen later in the day. That's not feasible.
I'd keep 12 to seven. I think it's better. I guess I'm thinking that would accommodate the most people.
David?
I'd agree.
Okay. Anybody else want to throw in? She's saving money.
I appreciate that.
Now get off her back. All right, but she did lay out, you know, what it would cost for the nine hours.
Very detailed.
As far as the election officials, there's nine of them. The warden for nine hours, the constable for nine hours, police officer for nine hours, and then she would have to feed them, which, that was kind of funny. But, so I would entertain a motion that we agree with Kathy, Town Clerk's office, and open the polls from 12 to 7.
Yeah, I'll make that motion as requested by the town clerk.
Seconded.
Okay, and everybody should know that the mail-in is available to everyone. No excuse. You can just come, request a ballot, and mail it in, or as opposed to, you know, just for absentee voters, doesn't, this is a no excuse. You can just mail in your ballot. And just the cost of mailing out the ballots is about 84 cents each. So any registered voter can vote in absentee or in person, and then your ballots need to be in by end of day on voting day. So any further discussion?
I would just like to make sure that the word gets out there in whatever means we have, be it on the town website, Facebook, whatever we have to do. Maybe we can get it on the municipal, like, board down there.
Yep. You can do anything.
I know, you're amazing.
We can make up a little thing, and SLCT can actually do an ad on their little program. Now, before every meeting, you see all of these different things going on, so.
I'll have something attached to this, an 1835 banners.
Would you stop? We're not there yet.
Do you have any elections?
Would you stop that?
Oh, I thought we were going to bring banners across the street for the elections.
No.
Okay.
Relax, Richie. The poll's not there yet. That's another...
Come on, help me out.
Oh, no, she's not. After you just blamed her for something that Bill did? No.
I'll whip your shovel next week.
Note that I wear boots every week. Okay, all those in favor?
Gil, my eye.
Smith, eye.
Krantz and I. Okay, so it's the appointment to the Fair Committee that the individual won't be here. And that's because she said her death in the family, as opposed to the Corliss's. But again, we can move forward with that appointment. She is actually taking over some of the responsibility for the vendor situation at the fair. She's taken it over from Doug Downing.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Well, just the vendors, not the whole thing. Doug is still the head honcho.
Yeah, that was a good dinner they had down there a couple of weeks ago at the eight point. I was able to walk down, it was so close.
And it was free, John.
I liked that part, too.
That's why John was there.
It was good. It was good. A lot of people.
A lot of people involved in the fair.
It was impressive. Okay, so we want to appoint Ms. McGaw.
McGaw to the Fair Committee?
Okay. I'll make a motion, we appoint Megan Fowler McGaw to the Sterling Fair Committee.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Gil, my eye.
Smith, eye.
Okay, so we'll just let Megan know also, comma?
Yes.
And here's a fun one. Worcester Regional Retirement System. Do you want to talk to that, Bill, or...
Sure. At some point in the last couple of months, the Worcester Regional Retirement System voted the local option of the 5% COLA for the member towns. The towns have to vote that, so if 2/3 of them support it, then it would go into effect. If not, then it will not. That 5% is on the, it's going to be 3%, but if the two additional percent happens, all of that is on the first $16,000. They claim that it will not impact our FY '24, '25 assessment, period.
Do you want to comment? Because I'll give you one.
Nope. I have no comments. And we have 62 retirees, John. So my recommendation would be not to support it. I would imagine other towns, and I've seen some other towns that have already taken action, have not supported it, but that decision falls to you.
That's one, like, Dave, I have to abstain, because, believe it or not, Mariana actually would be affected by that. And I ran it out by Bill, and he agreed. So that would be a conflict of interest for me to vote one way or the other on that.
She would be affected with the Worcester Regional as opposed to the Teachers?
Yeah, she's a parent, so she's, her retirement, she gets it from the Worcester Regional Retirement Board, not the Teachers. I thought it was the same thing, but it's not.
No.
So.
Okay.
She sat up there.
Just sit there. David?
So what would be the increase if, is they looking for, if they don't get the 5%, is it 3%?
Yeah.
I'm going to have to side with Bill, I believe.
Okay, and I agree with that. I don't think we can give out 5% when everybody else is sticking to the 3, so I would entertain a motion. David?
I make a motion that we deny the request for the Worcester Regional Retirement Board for their 5% increase and leave it at 3%.
Okay, and it'd be an additional 2% over the 3. They already get the 3. So, all right. I second that. All those in favor?
Smith, eye.
Krantz and I.
That's good.
All right, so...
And we can be overridden by 2/3 of the town.
If 30, what is it, 34 of the towns do?
Yeah. So we send in ours and see what everybody else does.
And that would start affecting us in FY '26, is that what you said?
Well, we'd probably hit our assessment then, but this would go retro back to July 1st of '22 for the retirees.
So how would we handle that assessment-wise in our budget?
It would not affect our '24, '25 assessment.
All right, and then, now, John.
There's a banner.
Banner. Okay, so we've had various people ask to put a banner across the two poles in front of the 1835, and we did have a group that did it a few months ago and actually drilled holes into the towers.
It was not the group, it was a miscommunication on our end. It was not them, but it did get drilled into the columns. So I don't obviously want that happen to 200-year-old columns on a regular basis. My opinion is that we, you know, people shouldn't be advertising on our building. They could put their signs out front, get a sandwich board, put it wherever, but you have Carl's opinion, which is fairly similar, and Sherry is also fairly, I don't know if we printed it.
Yeah, we got them both.
Yeah, I don't have it in mine. Fairly similar that they can, you know, fly a flag or use a sandwich board or use something. The other option would be to have a permanent fixture, but at some point, 20 years down the road, we're still going to be in the same damage situation we're in now. Carl notes that we used to nail, I think, the bunting up to the top, which, you know, has caused its own damage back that needs to be repaired. So, you know, just settle it and make that decision.
So basically, no banners drilled with the hinges filled, drilled into the pillars?
Fixed to the building.
Yeah, okay. So again, you could use flags, there's so many options that you can use without using nails and screws, et cetera, and so on. John, do you have an opinion?
No, I agree with Carl and Sherry on that. I do. I thought that the banners, if they're not attached to buildings, I think are effective when they announce things, different events going on in town, whether it be the fair, a Boy Scout event, Girl Scout event, or, you know, voting, you know, and the elections.
Well, it's more when they were across, you know, when they ran right across the street. This is flat on the building, so you really don't...
I mean, down the road, maybe it's worth, where the GIB sign is right now, putting an electronic sign so you can, you know, advertise a little better as we do the renovation, but, or, you know, I don't know that we need to put the big banner across the road, you know, again, but I just don't want to see, you know, a building that we've put a significant amount of funds into have to repair damage to it for...
I agree.
Okay. David?
Agreed. I don't think anything should be affixed permanently or semi-permanently to any town building.
All right.
Unless it's our town signs.
Well, some of these groups are town groups, but still...
Right. It's not necessarily a town advertising something that we do as maybe the Select Board or anything like that. You know, somebody that was using a building for an outside activity, or anybody for that matter. I don't, you know, the banners are all different sizes. They get stapled, nailed, bolted.
So I entertain a motion that we say no to any signage affixed to the 1835 building.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any further discussion?
No, you sound like me anymore, aren't you?
What? No. I know how to say that word. No. A lot of people don't like to hear it. So, all right, and Bill's got a pretty full admin report.
Yeah, we've had a couple of things that have been added since the agenda was posted, so a brief budget update. We've had our meetings. As of right now, the majority of the capital items have been recommended for the warrant, so barring any major complications, those are pretty well set. We should have our MIA numbers tomorrow for insurance, which is the last piece of the town side of the operating budget. And then obviously, we wait for both Monty Tech and, let's choose it, Regional. In there, we just copied off from Foster, a Foster Company recommendation from our assessing company, the appraisal and consulting service for the easements relative to the 1835 septic work. It is, unless you have any major issues with it, about $3,400 to go through the process of takings for the easement.
And that easement is for the subject from the 1835 septic station. John, any questions?
Yeah, I guess it's a good, good and over, that's all.
And, you know, it's, it is a little more difficult to find appraisal companies that work in the specific area of, you know, municipal work, eminent domain stuff, so they happen to do it, so.
Does that become the basis for the eminent domain?
That will be the word for you.
Yeah.
Tomorrow, we have our agent dementia-friendly training here.
You want to just tell us where the funding's coming from?
Oh, there was an article approved for the 1835 septic work, so any funds relative to that project will come out of there. Agent dementia-friendly training, we had one last week for some of the staff town-wide here. We have another one tomorrow, and then we have another one for a different group next, Thursday or Friday. So in the case that we encounter folks, how to best deal with that, the best practices, both on our end and to assist them. The DLTA award or grant that we approved a few meetings ago for Steve to apply for, that will be awarded to us. I don't have the dollar figure, we just got the announcement yesterday. That is for the work on the MBTA-adjacent community by law that we may have to, well, have to implement should we want to continue with the Mass Works program. Police Cruisers, which were two of the capital items from last year, were finally delivered. We have a couple of other things that should be fairly close. Obviously, getting any vehicles is not particularly quick, easy right now.
Not today.
In your, I only printed one color one out, that sign. The North Central Chamber of Commerce is looking to donate "Welcome to Sterling" signs since there is not one on the campground road entry side of town on Route 12 North. We would talk about doing it there. That is part of the DOT right away, so we have to get that re-permitted from the last sign, which we would pay for, but the rest, it would be supplied by the Chamber of Commerce. If you don't have a problem with that donation, we would certainly accept it.
So this is, do they realize how many times, first of all, North Central, I get that, but the different sizes?
That's how it looks on the other ones as well. I drive by the Westminster one fairly frequently, and it looks very similar to that. They have the three different arms of their, the lending arm, the Chamber of Commerce arm, and then the apple seed visitor center.
I would have thought all the fonts and stuff would have been the same size. Just saying.
It's their branding.
Well, I can't resist. Are you a little thinking again?
Yes, I do. That's kind of say ass, but they do it when we say those things aloud.
Sorry. We get SEC violations.
No, it's a nice-looking sign.
It's a good sign. I would think...
No, you can't change it.
Well, we can pick the color, and that's...
Listen, here's the deal. Here's the deal.
If you're really wanting to advertise a one...
Listen, here's the deal. It's free.
I know.
Now, John, you should be...
The magic word.
You should be embracing the fact that it's free.
I'm embracing it, but I'm thinking it can actually put us into the, into the black even more. If these two things removed, then we could rent them out for like... North Central just has one advertisement on there in the middle. I'm not knocking...
Did you not hear what Bill said? He said they have three different arms, so those are representing the three different arms of the North Central.
I know, but they could just put a cover with North Central, Mass Chamber of Commerce. That's all they need.
I understand that, John.
We could make something that hangs over this.
Oh, my God.
Now, we're thinking alike. This is good.
Please, please move forward.
Bill's loving all this. This is coming into the general fund coffers. Are you kidding me?
We appreciate North Central offering to us to do a welcome sign to here in Sterling. They've been really pretty active in the area the last few months, particularly.
And joining certainly helps, obviously, being a member. They're much more willing to assist us.
Yeah. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
It's free. It's for me.
All right. Also in front of you is the Facilities Manager job description. As I think I told you a couple of meetings ago, we, ours had moved on to a new position, so that was vacant, so we had reposted it. I also noticed recently that West Boylston was in the same spot a lot longer than us, so I began talking to Jen, their new town administrator, about the potential for sharing the position. Make it full-time. Neither one of us need a full-time position, but this would allow us to share that position. It seems like it could work. It gives them a little bit higher role in all of the preventative maintenance, so we have crafted the job description that we got back in the summer from our study, added a couple of things, took a couple of things out, so that it would work for both towns. She is bringing it to her board tonight. I am obviously bringing it to you folks to see if it's worth continuing on, should you have any questions, comments, or concerns.
So this basically would be a joint effort with West Boylston and us, and would probably save us some money in terms of it wouldn't be full-time. How about the benefits?
The position previously was 30. We were posting it at 36, so if it's now only... The position previously was 30, we were posting it at 36, so if it's now only 20, then obviously, we'd be using the insurance policy because it would be a full-time benefited one unless the person didn't take it.
But we would share that cost with West Boylston?
Yeah.
Very similar to our zoning officer.
Probably a different arrangement where the employee would be probably 100% one place or the other, so their time is one place, they're an employee one place to retirement, instead of having two separate checks, and then the other town just sends them the assessment.
Have we had other applications at all on this?
So we had three for the position that we posted alone, I told all three of them that I would keep them in consideration should the position change. They may want to consider it or not, you know, based on the change in duties, but you know, I think it's a way that we can share a service and, you know, be a little more economical and.
Yeah, I agree. Well, you know, if they have the new position, I mean, the new hours and everything else, and they're still interested, I don't know if that requires consideration, or if this is, if they'd have to, they'd probably have to apply to West Boylston as well, right, I mean?
So probably one would just accept the applications, I mean, you could probably apply in both, but just have one, one collected, and then we could do a joint, joint interview process.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
I think it's a great idea, you know, share services, and he might get a better qualified applicant, be in a full-time position.
All right.
And then the last one, I think I only have one printed out, it might be in front of Maureen. Some bad news. So obviously, the building inspector had a vehicle that was repurposed from the ambulance department, from the ambulance, their medic vehicle. So they're starting to get some costly repairs, engine, oil getting into the engine. So right now, he is using the current facilities vehicle, both of them are 2008 and a 2009. The former ambulance vehicle has about 200,000 miles, the other one is a little over 100. Both have some pretty, pretty significant rust. So I know one of them wouldn't make it to town meeting, the other ones might be viable until that point, so I don't know if we want to kick it to the next meeting or this one, but I got quotes that we could use through the ARPA funds, $30,000, it doesn't have to be any upfitting, it would be a civilian, civilian package. The Ford Escape one is a little bit more, but it is on the lot. The Equinoxes are about three months out from Chevy, but a little bit less expensive. So it may, at this point, instead of looking at, you know, several thousand dollars in repairs, move on from, trade them in, move on from them.
This is the one that's available.
Need it made out of stock. Most identical.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah, and the difference being that one is available sooner rather than later.
Yeah. I wouldn't know which one is better than the other one, I guess they're both similar, right, the vehicles?
Small SUVs, the big thing is that they're all wheel-drive, the vehicle that he currently has from West Boylston is rear-wheel-drive, so I know we've had to get him unstuck a couple of times from various job sites. It's not something I particularly like, just jump dumping on you, but.
Does West Boyl, I mean, do we share this cost too, or is this, no, this is our cost, right?
This would be a Sterling purchase, I mean, I don't want to share ownership with them. We may be able to get something. But it would be similar to what I did when I was sharing a police chief in Beckett, we bought the cruiser, you know, if the agreement fell apart, I don't want them looking for half of a vehicle.
Do you get any? So salvage wouldn't be very much, huh, probably?
Probably 500 for the two, each of them. Which takes a thousand off of it, so.
How much can we take off about the remote starter?
273, I agree.
Take it off. And he doesn't need a spare tire.
So the choice is, you know, put it through into capital, I guess, or through the budget, or ARPA, right? ARPA. Have to have this thing sold. ARPA would be a lot quicker.
Yep, and we also are, you know, we're getting the state funding back for the playground, so that 100,000 that we used for the playground will be coming back to us. And as I've said before, I am hoping that the other half that hasn't been appropriated can be our seed money for the downtown work.
Well, gentlemen, should he move forward?
Do we have to take a formal, are we able to take a formal vote on this tonight? Part of your comments, not on the agenda, but I mean, I have no problem with it, we've got to do it, that's all. As long as it's part of the meeting, I would move that we use, have Bill proceed with, you know, with utilizing the ARPA funds for replacing the building inspector vehicle.
Seconded.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Is it a specialty vehicle, or just an awful?
Civilian package Chevy.
Shop in a CarMax?
Something I could have bought anywhere, yeah.
Is that where you shop?
No, state contract place, no.
Are you considering use the CarMax, since it's a civilian package?
So bidding those out is a little bit more difficult because none of them are part of the state contract. And at that point, you're probably not that much less money.
That's why I shop at CarMax.
Yes, but you're, you're not a municipality, whether you know it or not. You don't have to go to those people that the state says, oh, here's the people you should use. Okay. All those in favor of having Bill move forward with this?
Phil, coin and I.
Smith, I.
Grant's an eye.
I certainly appreciate it.
You could knock off the plate bracket.
We got a couple of those somewhere. Yeah, we could save 500 real quick.
Yeah.
Neither does your radio either.
No.
Yeah, no radio.
Yeah, we need seats, really, just need driver's seat.
Seriously, it's like when you buy a Jeep, you gotta buy everything individually.
No formats.
No. No, you want the formats, you'll rent those. Okay, but with the understanding that, yes, it's for the zoning officer. However, if somebody else in the building needs it to do something, then, you know, to move something or whatever, they can use that also. All right. Moving forward.
So we did receive the quotes for the lift, well, the elevator modernization over at the library. Otis Elevators, who services our stuff, they are a state, state contract company, so they have given us the most cost-effective quote at this point. The library trustees have recommended it without any of the options that were potentially on there, you know, new carpeting or something, whatever the heck it was, new paneling in there. So should you not have any problems, we can move forward with that, that was an approved ARPA project, I think the number, off the top of my head, is like 117? I can't remember if I had sent that out or not, but I can send it out in the morning. That's the biggest one, once we get that rolling and situated, we can talk about the lift. That is one manufacturer, so we'll, we'll get the quote updated from then. I know we got it updated last summer. I think it's about 30,000, so we should have some ARPA funds to return, barring any complications. I know we do have to upgrade the alarm box with the modernization of the library elevator, so that it's another seven or eight, 8,000? And we just did all our annual services on those. I think that's about it for major things on my end.
Bill, on the school flooring, I know it's still on here, and I know that we're supposed to do the boat in school next year, we still have the funds for that, right? Yeah, we're not going for it.
So it's 100 for each school, we basically spent the 70 or so, or 80, I think it was 85, which included all the materials for the Choxit side, so the other 100 is still available.
Just ran out of time, that was it, okay.
Yeah, we barely got the Choxit school done before school started. But I think the contract was a little over 100,000 for the two buildings. So we have to make sure that they're lined up for the beginning of July, end of June. Well, if they keep getting snow days, probably the beginning of July to get this going.
Snow days?
They call that school all the time. One thing I miss about teaching.
Well, they shouldn't call them snow days, though.
No.
More like mental health days.
Yeah, mental health days. All right, and do we have an ETA when they're going to start the butcher group?
I think right around, right around when Kama gets back, or just before she goes on her vacation, just so she can have all of the chaos happening above her and deal with us. It's going to be weather-dependent, but they are looking at, obviously, early spring, one of the first projects out of the gate.
That's it?
That's it for me, unless you have any questions.
John?
I'm good, I appreciate the update.
Appreciate it.
Kama, do we have any? Have we seen any interest in the scholarships?
Not received anything, I did forward them to the schools, and it's on the website, I haven't heard anything yet, but they're not due until, April 1st or something.
Just for anybody that might be listening or knows somebody that has someone looking for scholarships, speaking of North Central Mass Chamber of Commerce, they have a scholarship available too to anybody within the region, and the thing with that one, it needs to be in by March 1st. So if you know anybody, or if somebody's listening, or whatever, there's another opportunity for a scholarship, which, of course, you need for this crazy world. All right, other than that, people have missed the last movie for SLCT with Casablanca, and instead, we sit here. Sad story. Anything from you, Joe?
As Bill referred to, the school board meetings Monday, the 27th.
Right.
We're hosting a capital budget committee meeting on the 23rd. We'll be meeting to discuss what I call Plan B, that is, if the school budget doesn't come in the way we expect it to come in.
You have an expectation? Good for you.
Well, I've discussed it with Bill, and he said expectations, I'm going by the expectations right now. Should it not occur that way, we want to have a Plan B that we can discuss and potentially bring back and take to department heads if we have to make budget adjustments as a result of that.
I gotta say, most of the departments seem to have come in pretty even. I mean, other than the fact that some of the costs have to go up, I mean, you have no choice when it comes to some of their.
My key request, and I think you've heard that, is can you even it out?
Yeah.
Every year, because
But do you see that as?
Every year, we seem to have a peak here, and then it goes down. Why can't we think about what are the less important expenditures of moving to next year to even it out a little bit, which would help the town out? But I know how planning goes, I've been in business budget for many years, it's always this year, and it's never next year.
Yeah, it's just hard, especially now, because the cost of everything has gone up, and some of those projects that you might want them to wait on are just going to cost that much more next year.
Perhaps.
Well, we ran into that, you know, just with the senior center garage, actually, in that if we had done it when we wanted to do it, would have been a lot cheaper, you know? That and not paying prevailing wage would be nice. But, yeah, it's, I think that's kind of a difficult ask, I get that. And it's, like, for instance, with the town clerk and her budget, I understand you asked her to shave 1,000 dollars or so off of her budget. And it's a difficult thing to do, because the state mandates that you do A, B, C, and D, you know, and just the cost of mailing these ballots, that's 84 cents, just one ballot. So that's kind of a situation that they have little to no control over.
I know, I understand costs are real, and we got to deal with them, you know, but at the same time, you know, I'm the, the town advocate for trying to, you know, even out the budget and come in within budget and save the taxpayers on each other.
Be nice, wouldn't it? Well, even, even at that, even, even with where we are now, and I know nobody likes to pay taxes, no matter who or where they are, and nobody wants to see an increase, and I understand that. But if you look at other communities around us, whose tax rates are higher than ours, and they have less services, so, you know, maybe that's where you cut, if you want to cut something, you cut your services, and how do you do that? When you're already somewhat bare-boned? How, Joe? Does it keep you up at night?
I sleep well at night, Maureen.
Because I'm mean. Anything else?
Just on the school thing, for what it's worth, I think Joe knows, Bill knows, but I did talk to the superintendent. The administration up there is well aware that all five towns are budgeting, right now, 4% for the assessments for this fiscal year coming up.
At Sterling, we're going to three.
We hope we are going to three, but the least they know.
My earlier plan was three, but it's now four.
Oh, let's go with three, Joe.
I think they understand the request is pretty unified, that going no higher than four, is what I would say. So they know that, so we'll see. Got a lot of work ahead of us up there, but hopefully they.
If it comes in that way, John, great, okay? We'll see on Monday, I guess, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. All right. There are a few things that, nothing to do with the budget, but a heads up on some things that are coming up as far as Mr. Mackey, who slid out of the room. But at the end of the year, and he just wanted us to be aware of this, that we're going to need somebody to take over his position at the Monmouth Chusset Joint Transportation, which he suggested Ryan Meridian, he said that most of the people on that are superintendents, DPW superintendents and town officials. Also, he was on the MRTA, and for some reason, John, he has you raising your hands for that. And, and then he'd like to also, at the end of December 2023, basically a year from now, he's going to withdraw from active participation in, with the EDC. And then David, he's passing the torch to you for the, the townwide cleanup effort after this year. So kind of work together, that's great. All right, but those are things that, you know, if anybody else is interested in any of those things, Economic Development Committee, the Monmouth Chusset Regional Transport, and the Joint Transportation Committee of the MRPC, so.
They all have to be filled, no question.
They have to be filled, or we definitely want representation to all of those things, so Mr. Mackey's been doing it for quite a while, and now he feels as though he wants to step back. Crazy. But other than that, Kama, anything from you that we should know about? You want to share? No? Ron, you're all set? I know, isn't that fun?
Couldn't go out of the movie.
They had a free movie, free popcorn, and seriously, SLCT, unbelievable to do, do that for the community, I wish you had more participation, but that's the way it goes. On that note.
Move to each other.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Coin and I.
Smith, I.
Grant's an eye.